...meeting for the city council, for the city of Prattville. This time, if you're able, you're invited to stand for the pledge of allegiance and our dedication.
(inaudible) to flag the United States of America and consider Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We applaud your prayers, please. Father, in the midst of our personal agendas, we pause to thank you for the generous gift of this day and for your gifts of life, health, strength, and for the safety of our community. Our heartfelt sympathy is extended to friends and families of our community that have lost loved ones in recent days and to all of those that suffered losses in the storms in North Alabama last night. We're mindful of all that are daily wrestling with the challenging issues of life. We ask for your hand of comfort, your gift of peace, to be with all affected. We pray for all citizens that are providing service to their fellow man, whether local or abroad, whether military, civilian, or public service. We pray for their efforts to be successful and at the end of their duty, for their safe return to their family. We pray for the health and healing of nations in conflict, our country, our state, our great city, and their respective leadership, and for all of those that have an influence on history. Tonight, as we conduct the business of our city, we pray our thoughts and actions are pleasing to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. (inaudible) 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 John Lee Finnegan, 211, Dear Trace, coming before you regarding Resolution Number One, the agreement that for the mill. And I wanted to give a little history. This process started six years ago, Longstreet Capital Lot of Atlanta, registered Prattville Partners LLC on 3/8/12. On March 20th, 2012, Mayor Busby announced a contract had been signed for them to buy Continental Eagle, and they were requesting a rezoning for residential. On 12/30/14, however, HPRA bought the building in foreclosure for 1.7 million. They were getting approximately $250,000 from lodging taxes that otherwise would have gone to the general fund. Prattville Partners dropped out at that time. HPRA then renovated for approximately $2 million plus the public safety building. On 1/29/16, Pratt Cotton Gym Mill LLC, a subsidiary of Lettich, which is out of Memphis, and was registered in the state of Alabama. And on 2/4/16, in an agreement with HPRA, was to buy the mill for 350,000 with 50,000 for the next five years. The city then signed a lease with HPRA for the public safety building for $249,000 for a 30-year contract, and HPRA took out a $5 million loan. So basically, the citizens are paying for that loan. And one of the things that I have said before, and I said at the last meeting, is that I was never against this project, but I always felt it should be a private project. I understand infrastructure. There's a million-dollar Maple Street extension process that's going on, or going to be going on. We haven't been able to see the agreement, and I don't know why that wasn't on the line. I don't know if it's confidentiality, but considering that this has all been out in the open for six years, thank you, oh, for six years, I really feel that we should have been able to see that, because we would have been able to speak and see what our money is on, being spent on. We did $10 million of tax incentive for Hardy. We bought the $1.5 million property where the public health building's going on. We gave Aiken a $1 million tax rebate. We're doing the $6 million bridge in Merrow Project, and I just feel that this project, for the amount of time and the amount of work that's gone into it, that this should be a private enterprise. It's only going to be apartments and maybe some other apartments, I mean, some other venues, but in reality, I don't see why all of a sudden now it's on the citizen's shoulders. Thank you. Thank you. (inaudible) 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 My name is Herbie Johnson. I live at 1429 Martin Luther King Drive, Prattville. I've been a resident of Prattville a year and more raised here. I worked at Cotton Hill Gym when I was a young man, about 62 years ago now. My father worked over there for 42 years, dedicated his life to the cotton mills. He really loved it every day, as he did. I look back and we had a beautiful cotton mill on this side of the creek, gin shop on the other side of the creek. We lost the cotton mill to a fire. We just, the old Pratt House, I remember the Busby boys built up there. We used to play up in the house, all back out in the woods, years ago. But I just encourage y'all, but let's move forward on this thing. It's too important to Prattville to let something like this slip out. Once it does, we can't get back, you know? And it's so, it's so, it's so important to downtown Prattville. You know my daughter, she doesn't follow, she won't turn the fork with that. Our daughter, that already, but, and it's just, I just like, encourage y'all to book places and then on the farm with it. (applause) 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 Thank you. (inaudible) Thank you. Amy Mallow, 136 First Street. I wanted to bring up a couple of things. The Prattville Chambers Economic Development Group was asked to partner with HPRA a couple of years ago on an economic impact analysis, and I just wanted to give you some of those numbers about this project Abraham, as this project originated as an economic development project in the very beginning. From day one, this has been an economic development project and should be looked at as such. In the beginning of this project, $14 million will be pumped into the economy from the construction dollars alone, with 309 jobs in addition to the $39 million estimated for this particular project, in addition to that $3.2 million in tax revenue impact from the spending power that will be brought to the market. That spending power from the families that will live in these particular apartments is as much as $5.5 million additional to this market. What that equals with our economic modeling software called M-Plan that we use on all of our economic development projects is approximately $8 million annually, up to as much as $15 million annually, depending on the income that comes in from those families. If you look at that and multiply that over the years, that is a tremendous amount of dollar impact and spending power that comes in from this project and into this market. This economic modeling software, again, as I mentioned, we use this for all of our projects and look at this from an objective point of view of how the dollars do impact the actual project that comes into this particular area. So this project will have an impact from an economic standpoint. Thank you. Thank you. Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on any item on our agenda this evening? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank you. You know, one thing that we've been very fortunate for around Prattville, that one way that you can spell Prattville is partnerships, and that is what has really helped, helped Prattville move from the time Daniel Pratt moved to this area and decided that he wanted to, to be the renaissance man and create Prattville as he saw in his vision. Lodging tax was put on by council very similar to this council, and we have benefited so much from that. So those are some of our out-of-town guests who are coming in and actually helped pay for so many of the projects that we have going on. Some of the members on this council now actually help in our parks and recs department with a dollar fifty per room, lodging fee that went on there. So we need to thank not only the citizens, this council, other councils, but also all the tourism dollars that come in. So we've been blessed so, so many, many ways, and I think one way we can look at that is actually under the partnership group. But with that said, Mr. President, I'd like to move right on along. As I said, you know, it's been said many times in so many ways that we already make a nice service-oriented organization. Our success, we owe, we owe to our citizens and our employees. With that said, I wish to open the floor to Public Works Director Dale Gandy and bring forth a couple of his employees at this time.
Thank you, Council. Yeah, tonight, we just wanted to kind of formally introduce to y'all a couple of team members from Public Works that work very hard every day to ensure that we're providing the services that all of our citizens have come to expect. Jonathan Larkin has been with us 10 months or so, and never come up here and formally introduce him, so we want to do that tonight. So Jonathan is the Assistant Public Works Director and Stormwater Coordinator. He's come in and hit the ground running. So this is Jonathan, and we're glad you're here, and thank you, man. Yeah, we would have done this sooner, but if anybody knows Jonathan, this isn't what he enjoys to do. Thanks, was Vincent DeRaimus. Vincent come in on the wastewater collection crew as a trainee, and I guess a little bit over a year ago now, and he come in and has worked his tail off and has promoted up, and now he's the new foreman over that crew. And he's done very well, and we're glad he's here and providing that excellent service that everybody comes to expect. So Vincent DeRaimus is the new wastewater foreman. (applause) 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 Yeah, Jonathan's position was actually created, a portion of it was created out of an unfunded federal mandate by MS4 program on that one. Also, you know, one of the things that's very important around Prattville is actually financing. And at this time, I'd like to ask our Finance Director to come up. He also has some, two new employees in his department I'd like to, he's going to introduce, but before he does that, I'd actually like to give him a proclamation. It's the Certified Government Financial Management Month across the United States, and as I said earlier, if anybody likes to see the Finance Director, because that usually means somebody's getting paid. So if you'll come up and accept this, I certainly would appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Well, I, I'll tell you, it's been a bit of a challenge navigating the last couple of months, throughout our busy season, being short-staffed. We've had some transitions, but wanted to take this opportunity tonight to bring up our two newest members of the Finance Department. We have our two new revenue clerks, and I just wanted to introduce them to you all so that next time you're coming through the Finance Department, put a name on the face. This is Mary Ricker and Tracy Ebersaw, and they joined us last Monday, so they've been here for a little over a full week and are learning very fast, so we're very excited to have them, we really are.
Thank you. I'll tell you, ever since Daniel Oakley has come here, he has been, he's just been wonderful. I cannot say enough great things about him. Inside his department's been so much going on, as so many of us navigate around the city hall, so many, you know, during our daily work chores have realized that our City Clerk and our Human Resources Director and also our Judicial Department have been doing some shuffling around. And some of that's been because of the project that has already been talked about earlier. If it had not been for the historical buildings, our public safety would not have moved across the pond. And so with that move, that opened up so many more avenues, because we were busting at the seams here inside City Hall. But our HR Director was able to move on over, and she has, her and her department now have a great place to, to not only hire and, and help our various departments, but the City Clerk has a great office there. Judicial is doing better now, now that just moves right on down the line. Our Finance Department in the very near future will be leapfrogging over the executive branch, setting up office in the old HR area, and then moving back after theirs is, is remodeled and so forth on that one. But you know, it just takes, it takes all those moving pieces, but at the end of the day, again, it takes financing, takes funding, and that comes from this council, so I really appreciate you guys on that one. And, but, you know, some other things we actually have going on at this point in time is also our Wilson Pickett Music and Arts Festival. I have some information before you guys tonight. It talks about the various things that'll be going on. It starts at 9:30 with our community chorus, and it goes all the way through to 6:00 PM. We're Soul Tree will be playing. It's going to be back over here at, sometimes a lot of us know it, either Scott House, who's directly behind us, previous fire chief, but also the Prattville Creative Arts Center over there. But hopefully be able to get out there and enjoy some of this. There'll be seven different children activities, including paper marvelling, a clay wheel demonstration, chalk art wall, music wall, and a totem project. Anybody know what the totem project is? Well, I have good with it, so if you don't know, good with it, it's not just a totem pole in the ground. So please find time to enjoy those. And recently, I did enjoy our Dixon youth baseball, as it had opening day, and a lot of the councils here, we've had so many great things going on inside the city of Prattville. As I move right on along, Mr. President, you know, our founding, our founding father, Daniel Pratt, he was an entrepreneur and renaissance man, has influenced our community for multiple generations since 1839. Resolution One on Agenda Nine is a long time coming. It's been a labor love, and there've been a lot of communities that support this project. With this project, Daniel Pratt's influence will carry on for generations to come. You know, projects don't just happen. They take time, they take funding, and they have to have a reason. In this case, it was a historical reason. This long-awaited project is a way, is a way for us, is a way for us to protect our heritage, our history, and influence descendants for generations to come. Your vote tonight would be long-reaching and beneficial to this community for years, many years to come. So I hope you guys will see forward to approve that. Also, on tonight's agenda is Resolutions Three and Four. There are tap projects. They have been previously approved by council, but Aldo is requesting to ratify and affirm the projects for the engineering services for the city's reimbursement for these expenses. Facilities Committee, on another note, Facilities Committee was communicated with regards to Resolution Number Five, has moved forward and placed an HVAC system for the Family Support Center, which is just west of us here. But we all know here in the South, even though you don't know if it's going to be 30 or 40 or 50 degrees at night, but usually during the daytime, you're going to need some kind of air conditioner or so. to need some kind of air conditioner or so. From the floor, from the floor tonight, you will, I hope, will be coming up to trade in two of our Kenworth trucks, our sanitation trucks on that, that you guys see, see good reasons to move forward on that one. As earlier, we had our public works director come up here. I have seen so much progress in the public works field. Implementing the enterprise fund, implementing the public works, and it's been so many blessings that have actually helped so many different, whether it's the citizens or the employees, but most certainly the day-to-day activities. There's not near as many reasons for the mayor to step into the public works yard, but I always enjoy going there. But hopefully you guys will see forward to move on that. You know, another event that we just recently had, and it was an honor to me when we heard the gin shop, or replica of the gin shop whistle blow out to Prattville Marriott's Oak Tavern, saluting our city's history. Hopefully each one of you will have to find time to go out there and enjoy that again in some shape, form, or fashion. We owe that. A little thank you to Dr. Broner for that. Since Robert Trent Jones came to Prattville, and again, if you look at our lodging taxes prior to RTJ, and look at them now, and it doesn't take a mathematician to really see what benefit we have had from that. But it was his dream that all of the RTJ courses had some kind of signature event, and this is what it was for the City of Prattville. So I hope we all get to hear it whenever somebody's blowing it. I believe it's supposed to be at four o'clock in the evening, so listen out for it. Mr. President, I send in my report.
Thank you, sir. Any councilors have any questions from the mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we'll move into reports from the council on special committees. Counselor Jackson.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Cables.
No, sir.
Counselor Strichett.
No, sir.
Counselor Bennett.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Oakley, financial report, please.
Good evening. Everyone should have a financial packet in front of them, and first page in the packet's going to be the general fund revenue report. And it shows that we have received seventeen million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for the fiscal year to date, and this is up 0.24 percent compared to the same period of the prior year. Next page is the tax breakdown comparison, and on the tax side, we were up 6.84 percent for the month of the previous February, and this was largely due to increases in general sales tax, restaurant sales tax, and lodging tax. The next three pages show the general fund expenses broken down by department, and we are forty-one point six seven percent of the way through the fiscal year, and we have spent forty-four percent of our budgeted expenditures to date. Next page is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement, and the wastewater fund generated in that income from operations of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, thirty-five dollars for the month of February. The total expenses overall well under budget, while operating expenses are comfortably under budget for this point in the year. Next page is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement, and the sanitation fund reported a net loss of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars for the month of February. And this loss was due in large part to approximately fifty-two thousand dollars that we paid for two loads of garbage cans during the month. The expenses overall remain under budget so far for the year as well. Next page is the judicial special revenue fund income statement, and the judicial fund reported a net loss of one thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars for the month of February. Collections are starting to pick up in February, March, we've seen so far this month. So that's a positive sign, and expenses remain slightly below budget so far this year. Next page is the bank balances report, and the total of all bank balances citywide was twenty-three million, four hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars at the end of the month. The last page is the citywide accounts payable and debt balances report, and the total outstanding AP and debt balance at the end of February was sixty-three million, thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. This balance does include the seventeen million dollar SRF loan that was issued in February to finish out the funding for the wastewater plant expansion project.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Oakley at this point. Thank you, sir. At this point, we'll move into our consent agenda. We have an opportunity to create a consent agenda and place the following items on it: a resolution to declare various community blocks to be a public nuisance or their abatement; set a public hearing for time eleven, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five as amended. Resolution Number Two, to surplus IT equipment from the information technology department. Resolution Number Three, to surplus one vehicle from the police department. Resolution Number Four, to set a public hearing to vacate certain property located within Golson Place subdivision, Platte Number One. This time, the chair will entertain a motion to place these following items on a consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of creating a consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. We now have a consent agenda that is properly before us. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Thank you. Is there any discussion on any items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, and our consent agenda is adopted. At this point, we'll move into our agenda items. Resolution Number One, to authorize the mayor to enter into a project development and cooperation agreement between Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority and Pratt Cotton Gin Mill LLC and the City of Prattville for the purpose of economic development. Counselor Strichett, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Daniel Pratt Cotton Gin Manufacturing Facility is located in the downtown central business district of the City of Prattville, Alabama, and consists of approximately twelve point one six acres containing five historic great masonry buildings and related improvements. Whereas the Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority, HPRA, purchased said property along with additional property, which included the Prattville Public Safety Building and related improvements, green space, and a ten-acre more-or-less pond with a dam and spillway. And whereas the Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority and the City of Prattville desire that Pratt Cotton Gin Mill LLC rehabilitate and redevelop the property into multifamily residential apartments, and the city also desires to extend Maple Street. And whereas each of the parties desire to memorialize their understandings and agreements relating to the acquisition, construction, renovation, operation, and repair of the property as outlined in the project development and cooperation agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville hereby authorizes Mayor Bill Gillespie Jr. to execute said project development and cooperation agreement between HPRA, Pratt Cotton Gin Mill LLC, and the city, as well as any other documents and agreements necessary to carry out the purposes and intent of this resolution. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this resolution is adopted. Woo! We'll move to Resolution Number Two. If you like that as well. Resolution Number Two, to amend the fiscal year 2018 budget into award bid number 018-004 to Sunbelt Fire Incorporated for one high-pressure breathing air compressor for the fire department at a cost of nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty cents. Counselor Strichett, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Fire Department has a need for one high-pressure breathing air compressor, and whereas the fire department left ten bids for said compressor, and whereas one sealed bid was received, open and read on March 12, 2018, at 10:00 AM, and Sunbelt Fire Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of nineteen thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars. Now therefore, be it resolved that fiscal budget is amended as follows. Decreased fire department equipment maintenance, three thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. Increased fire department capital outlay, three thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. Be it further resolved that bid number 018-004 is hereby awarded to Sunbelt Fire Incorporated in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars for one high-pressure breathing air compressor, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal budget 2018 budget line item, fire department capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, and this resolution is adopted. Resolution Number Three, to amend the FY 2018 budget and to ratify and affirm authorization for the mayor to enter into an agreement with Civil Southeast LLC for engineering services for project number TAP MN TA 15948 for the Maple Street Sidewalk Historic District Improvements project at a cost not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Net cost to the city not to exceed five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Counselor Brown, we introduce this resolution.
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville received funding for transportation alternatives project, TAP MN TA 15948 for the Maple Street Sidewalk Historic District and Frequent Project. Whereas Resolution Book 2016A, page 167, authorized the mayor to enter into an agreement with Civil Southeast LLC for engineering design services for said project. Whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation will participate in certain costs for construction, engineering, and inspection services for said project. And whereas said engineering services are available from Civil Southeast LLC at a cost of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, net cost to the city not to exceed five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And whereas Section 41-16-51A 3, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, allows contracts to secure services with engineers possessing a high degree of professional skill to be let without competitive bidding. Whereas the funding for the total net cost to the city for this project is currently budgeted in the gas tax special revenue fund, TAP 2015 Maple Street. And whereas the city desires to move the total budget in amount for said project to the capital fund, projects fund, TAP 2015 Maple Street. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that the fiscal year 2018 budget is hereby amended as follows. Decrease gas tax special revenue fund, TAP 2015 Maple Street, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. Increase gas tax special revenue fund transfer out, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. Increase capital projects fund transfer in, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. Increase capital project fund, TAP 2015 Maple Street, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. Be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized and empowered to enter into an agreement with Civil Southeast LLC for said engineering services. Be it further resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville does hereby ratify and affirm the release of funds in an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, net cost to the city not to exceed five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars, to be paid to Civil Southeast LLC for said engineering services, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2018 budget capital projects fund, TAP 2015 Maple Street. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All those by a like sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution Number Four, to amend the FY 2018 budget and to ratify and affirm authorization for the mayor to enter into an agreement with Civil Southeast LLC for engineering services for project number TAP MN TA 16944 for the Pratt Street Sidewalk Improvements project at a cost not to exceed nineteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Net cost to the city not to exceed three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Counselor Brown, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville received funding for transportation alternatives project, TAP MN TA 16944 for the Pratt Street Sidewalk Improvement Project. And whereas Resolution Book 2016A, page 146, authorized the mayor to enter into an agreement with Civil Southeast LLC for engineering services for said project. And whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation will participate in certain costs for construction, engineering, and inspection services for said project. And whereas said engineering services are available from Civil Southeast LLC at a cost of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars, net cost to the city not to exceed three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And whereas Section 41-16-51A 3, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, allows contracts to secure services with engineers possessing a high degree of professional skill to be allowed without competitive bidding. Whereas the funding for the total net cost to the city for this project is currently budgeted in the gas tax special revenue fund, TAP 2016 Pratt Street. And whereas the city desires to move the total budget in amount for said project to the capital projects fund, TAP 2016 Pratt Street. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that the fiscal year 2018 budget is hereby amended as follows. Decrease gas tax special revenue fund, TAP 2016 Pratt Street, forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty cents. Increase gas tax special revenue fund transfer out, forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty cents. Increase capital projects fund transfer in, forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty cents. Increase capital projects fund, TAP 2016 Pratt Street, forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty cents. Be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized and empowered to enter into an agreement with Civil Southeast LLC for said engineering services. Be it further resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville does hereby ratify and affirm the release of funds in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars, net cost to the city not to exceed three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars, to be paid to Civil Southeast LLC for said engineering services, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2018 budget capital projects fund, TAP 2016 Pratt Street. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution Number Five, to ratify and firmly purchase and installation of HVAC equipment at the Family Support Center at 113 West Main Street for the Facilities Maintenance Division at a cost of six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville had a need to replace HVAC equipment at the property leased by the Family Support Center located at 113 West Main Street, and whereas said HVAC equipment and installation was available through Hughes Service Company LLC at a cost of six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And whereas funds for said equipment and installation are available in the Public Works Department Facilities Maintenance Division budget, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville, that funds in the amount of six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars are hereby ratified and affirmed to be paid to Hughes Service Company LLC, and that said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2018 budget line item, Facilities Maintenance Capital Outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution Number Six, to release the funds for the purchase of one twenty-two-yard side loader Kenworth truck from Ingram Equipment Company LLC through the NJPA Purchasing Cooperative for the Sanitation Division at a cost not to exceed two hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Counselor Cables, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. There is a need for one twenty-two-yard side loader truck in the Public Works Department Sanitation Division, and whereas said truck is available through the NJPA Purchasing Cooperative contract number 112014-THC from Ingram Equipment Company LLC at a cost not to exceed two hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And whereas lead time to build said truck is approximately three months. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville, that funds in an amount not to exceed two hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars for the purchase of said side loader truck are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Ingram Equipment Company LLC, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2018 budget line item, Sanitation Enterprise Fund slash Capital Outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this resolution is adopted. Item number seven is an ordinance to exempt certain covered items from the municipal sales and use tax during the third full weekend of July 2018 as authorized by Section 40-23-210 through 40-23-213, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, and Act 2017-120, generally referred to as the back-to-school sales tax holiday legislation. Counselor Cables, will you introduce this ordinance?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows. Section one, in conformity with the provisions of Section 40-23-210 through 40-23-213, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, and Act 2017-120, providing for a state sales tax holiday, the City of Prattville, Alabama exempts covered items from municipal sales and use tax during the same period, beginning at 12:01 AM on the third Friday in July 2018, which is July 20 of 2018, and ending at 12:00 midnight the following Sunday, July 22, 2018. Section two, this ordinance shall be subject to all terms, conditions, and definitions, time periods, and rules as provided by Section 40-23-210 through 40-23-213, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, and Act 2017-120, except that the time period shall only be specified in Section one above and not for all years thereafter. Section three, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to certify a copy of this ordinance under the seal of the City of Prattville, Alabama, and to forward said certified copy to the Alabama Department of Revenue to be recorded and posted on the department website. Section four, this ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication as required by law. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Before we can move forward with this legislation this evening, the rules must be suspended. What is the pleasure of...